Dr. Portleman? Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morella?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
And Sutcliffe? Here. Mr. Arena? Mr. Tidemello?
All right, files a little please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dan Lo.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Township public schools, Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on January 11, 2019.
Thank you. No student reps are here tonight, I don't think. Student tenants, report.
We have a presentation this evening, June 30, 2019 audit report.
Okay, Mr. Haye from the auditing front, he'll give us his usual outstanding report. He told me to say that in case he didn't. Okay, Rob, this is, remember the audit report?
I remember the audit report. We've, thanks for having me here tonight. We've recently issued your two reports that are due to the state every year. You have your annual independent audit. So you receive two reports from us. One is your comprehensive annual financial report, which includes all of your financial statements and related note disclosures. You also receive an orders manager report from us, which discusses the results of the audit at the end. So without getting into too much detail, what I can tell you is very good news all around. Your audit opinions, we give you three opinions in our audit, one on your financial statements, one on your internal controls, and one on your state and federal grant programs. All three opinions are what we call an unmodified opinion, or clean opinion, so to speak. Basically, the highest level of assurance, the highest level of opinion order can be given on all three instances. So that's very positive all around on all three fronts. From a financial standpoint, just to highlight a couple of the big numbers, your surplus at the end of the year ended at about $2.5 million. Very similar to last year's numbers. You're actually a million dollars over what the state allows you to keep as surplus. So what that means is you have actually a million dollars when you start preparing your next budget cycle. You have a million dollars on hand to help offset any cost increases in that budget. So that's a very positive thing to have, to have excess surplus. Very positive note in the orders manager report, there are no audit recommendations in your audit, which is extremely positive, very, dare I say, rare in our business to have, you know, as Katina could tell you and Diane could tell you, we do a pretty extensive audit, we look through a lot of stuff. So for a district this size, to go through that audit and have no audit recommendations that require corrective action plan is extremely positive. And obviously, it shows the hard work and of the business office and it shows in the work. You know, as we do the audit, we have no problems going through the audit, and obviously, the results show the work that they're doing. So I'd like to congratulate Katina and her staff on an outstanding audit.
Maybe you can, you better put that in a minute.
So we'll be happy to take any questions. I mean, we went over the report in detail with the finance committee, so without boring you too much with most of the numbers, those are the highlights of the numbers on the financial front. And again, no recommendations to speak of that require any.
I know you mentioned that's kind of unusual. I know you've been part of your audits, I would say that doesn't happen very often, again, no recommendations.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, our firm does, you know, between 90 and 100 school districts, I believe now. And, you know, I handle about a dozen or so myself, and, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but I would probably say, you know, off the top of my head, you know, 10% or less get no audit recommendations. You know, especially for a district your size, some of the real smaller districts, it's a little easier to have no audit recommendation, but you're a pretty decent sized district to have no recommendations. So you're certainly in rare company.
Couldn't find anything that was even like almost wrong?
Well, we do find things that we go over with the, with the business administration before we issue the audit. But, you know, we find things, but it doesn't rise to the level of becoming like, you know, needed corrective actions. So she could tell you, we find things, and she's, what are you getting? You know, so we say, no, we agree, it's not something that deserves to be in the audit, it's not a recommendation, but we always find things that, you know, let you know about, but nothing.
That's positive, Mike, feel.
That's right. Looking for recommendations.
And any other questions from Mr. Haye? I'm glad you could make it, I hope you'll enjoy this, it's better.
Thank you very much.
You'll have a good holiday.
All right, you too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We have some good news in the agenda. Violence and vandalism report, the bottom of page three. Right, committee reports? On the finance and facility, Karen?
I submitted the business administration.
She's gonna make it part of hers, correctional instruction, Mike?
Sure, we met last Tuesday. And, you know, the major item was the high school for all the studies. Some courses that won't run, a couple of new courses that are running. We just kind of went over the rationale for each one. We discussed the fact that those are people are getting ready to make their presentation as to changes for the master's schedule. But before that, they're gonna meet with curriculum committees, so the meeting will actually be January 7th before the reword. And there are some things guaranteed to us by Mr. Thompson, Social Studies and English, they had given some general questions, which, similar to the ones we had sent to the math department, just present like, how are we doing, just a little number crunching, and just, you know, checkup, shall we say. It was very positive, and.
And you scheduled for January 7th for the organizational meeting. Thank you. Policy, John?
Nothing to report.
Nothing on communications, Karen?
Nothing to report.
Safety and security, I don't think you guys are any of the right, John?
No.
Legislative delegate to the New Jersey School Boards, Karen?
So on December 7th, there was a meeting of the Legislative Committee of New Jersey School Boards. It was a very timely talk on vaccines, preventable illnesses, making, and vulnerable communities by Sean Hopkins, Senior Vice President, Center for Health Research and Transformation at the New Jersey Hospital Association. We also heard a presentation on the upcoming 2020 census by Mary Kugan, Vice President, Advocacy President of New Jersey. And finally, we received excellent legislative updates provided by the NJSBA governmental relations staff. We also received and approved, adopted, the 2021 Legislative Advocacy Agenda Action Plan. So I have PowerPoints from all three of those. If anyone's interested, just let me know, and I will send you over some links.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions, Karen? Morris County, Mike, O'Brien? I was not at that meeting, that was the night of all the meetings.
I can do a very good report on that. So there was, it was conducted at the Jefferson Township High School. The topic was social emotional learning, which, you know, as we all know, is a very hot topic right now. And their Director of Guidance, Margaret Wigdrin, presented how their school handles their guidance department and their social emotional learning program. They use the ASCA model, acknowledge, care, and tell. And we probably do the same here. So it was just a very, very informative meeting. The next meeting is January 16th, probably at Dover High School.
What date was that, Karen?
January 16th.
January 16th, thank you. If you register me for that, Mr. Stone, if you haven't already. Educational Services, I don't think.
We met last Wednesday. They had the open house, which Montpel attended, which was, it was very well attended by a lot of different school districts in and out of county. Very positive information coming back from it.
Someone's phone is probably mine, just ignore it. Okay. Ladies on Mr. Palmer? Dr. Arenas on your report. Athletic boosters, Mike?
Yeah, the athletic boosters Mustangs met, we met on December 4th. And just so you know, this is Spirit Week at Montpel High School, and the pep rally is going to be this Friday. They asked that the board president and I play in the basketball game.
Yes, please apply.
They did want me to go on record thanking, with two thanks, at this meeting. First of all, to the maintenance crew. In the fall, there were some problems, the famous incident with the bees and so on. And they wanted me to note what a great job and how helpful the members of the maintenance crew were in solving some of those problems, and taking care of all the things that were in the Mustangs. The second thing they wanted me to note is they wanted me to thank Dr. Roe Tar. They said that over the years, it would be difficult to try to chronicle anyone else who has attended as many sporting events in the district as you have been there to support them. And they wanted me to bring this to your attention, and their thanks for your high profile that you provided. Another topic that came up, a tradition that has been in the high school for decades, since maybe in first or second year of the school, was the Mustang Dinner. And over the years, so many events have developed over the course of time that, sad to say, because of so many things that happened in our district, probably the tradition of having the Mustang Dinner in the spring will come to an end this year. It won't be this year. Because where we stand now is, almost every sport has their own dinner. Now, I was at, for example, a football banquet the other night, and just to make all the recognition and so on, it went well over three hours. So what has happened is you have these banquets and events. It's too much to have one event and recognize everybody, besides which, it's at a time of year when there's so many things going on in the district. People have, they call it banquet fatigue in June with everything that goes on. So sad to say, this tradition is coming to an end.
Yeah, I think last year, I was at that meeting with Mike. I think they just about got 40 kids to come to the Mustang banquet, because they were all banqueted out. And I think we had a lady who gave a great report, Ms. Morella, who happens to be the daughter of John Morella. And I was so impressed by her report, and I just wanted to thank her in front of the whole board and get it into the official record. She did an outstanding job. Thank you very much. I think also was made clear that even at the end of the meeting, they thanked Renee, as Mike mentioned, but some of them wanted you to try and get some violin lessons if you're gonna play with the kids in the future.
Yeah, all that.
If you were having trouble keeping up. Ladies on, Karen?
The Cedar Hills meeting, January 22nd, but if you would just give me an indulgence, I did forget to mention that as part of my NJSBA report on December 10th, I attended the NJSBA Three Rs program for newly elected board members. And for, as a refresher, for veteran board members, the Three Rs stands for roles, responsibilities, and resources. And our soon-to-be sworn-in board member, Christine Danner, was there that evening. The other thing I wanted to mention was, Dr. Roe Tar had put in bits and pieces of the Montpel news that she sends around once a month, and it was to congratulate Sue Marinello, who was invited to make a presentation on district identity and branding to the Passaic County School Boards Association. And Sue also did a podcast with Ray Penny, and I would encourage any and all of you to go ahead. It's probably about a 20-minute talk, and Sue really walks Ray through the process of branding, mentions Montpel. And it was, even in the latest issue of School Board Notes podcast, what are the benefits of branding your district? And it mentions Sue, and it mentions us. So, thank you, Sue, congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Hildale?
A Hildale meeting, PTC meeting was December 5th. It was very well attended, indeed, it was really packed. The main, one of the main topics was, of course, fundraising. And I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention, they had a very successful fundraiser. I was shocked at the numbers and amount of money that they raised. And I just want to mention how the PTCs and groups like the Mustangs and so on, basically, what they do is add the extras that teachers may want or need for their school or the principal for the school. And a lot of discussion revolved around those types of things that they're going to provide. Also, they went over events that are coming up, scheduled. There was one item regarding school maintenance and structure that I brought to the attention of the Facilities Committee, I don't think we need to go over that. And the parents, you know, were a little concerned about that. So it was a very good meeting, I felt very enlightening.
Thank you, Michael. Joe, Valley View?
There's a meeting next month.
Okay, Mason, I was all prepared to go, however, it was canceled the night before. The next meeting is in February. Palmer, Woodstock?
January 16th.
Okay, Lozar?
Hi.
Dave and Michael, Dunamacuero there?
I think it's in January, isn't it?
Yeah, January. High School, Michelle?
Next January, so.
Public participation, opportunity for a member of the public to speak about anything that's on the agenda?
My name is President. Just a question, is that orders report an internal or a public document?
Public document.
And that gets posted?
No, they read. No, but we can provide it.
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
The summary would probably be better than giving them the whole audit report.
Well, it's up to you.
I'm half-challenged anyway, so I probably couldn't get through the whole thing.
You just, yeah, just reach out to me, and I'll tell me which one you want, the summary or the total.
Thank you so much.
Anything else, public? Consent resolution? May I have a motion, please?
Sure.
Second. Second. All right, section one, we have the minutes, any questions? Section J, we have some donations. We also have a change in the prescription plan, scheduled for February 1st. Item K, we have the bill list. I would like to take a special vote, if we could, on item K. Huh?
What was the question?
K-11. So everyone, if you turn to K-11. K-11 is a board member recognition. It's read on the agenda, and we have a resolution here for you, John?
Thank you.
Read as follows, whereas John Morella was sworn in as a Montpel Board of Ed member on April 27, 2010, and whereas during his tenure as board member from 2010 through December 2019, John has served as the Chair of the Morris County Educational Services Commission. And whereas during his tenure, John served on the following standing committees, policy, personnel, safety, security. And whereas during his tenure, John also served as a parent who plays on for Valley View Elementary School and the Negotiation Committee. Whereas John has, seeks to publicly, Montpel Town Board of Ed seeks to publicly recognize the commitment and dedication of John, and to extend their thanks for his years of service. And be further resolved with a copy of the resolution presented to John on the recognition of his years of service on the 7th day of December 2019. John, on behalf of Board of Education, it's my honor to present you with this resolution, and also, a little remembrance for all of the hard work that you've done for us. Congratulations.
Charlie, will we be able to now, or at the end?
I would, maybe at the end, that way we'll get everyone to stay. All right, so if we could hold off K-11 to the end, and then we'll have everyone speak, okay? L, or those that want to, any questions? M? All right.
Do you have to have the addendum?
Oh, right, we did have one addendum, under L, L6, which the administration gave out, basically, the raise in the substitute rate to $100 per day for the attached substitutes effective January 1, 2020. I think that should be in the resolution, so if you want, just amend that, Katina, okay? All right, roll call on the agenda, and the addendum, and then we'll come back and do the resolution with John separately, please.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Portleman?
Yes, on everything abstaining on the addendum, and just a note of appreciation to the association leadership for the replacement of the prescription plan.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes, everything except for K-1 checks 92975 and 93011.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. All right, now I'd like to go back and just do K-11 again, let's have a separate motion on that. This is a board member recognition, spoken by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by somebody over there. O'Brien? Okay, I think at this time, Karen, if you'd like to, if you have anything to share.
I would. You know, John has been, if I, when I think of John, what I think of is a very steady, consistent, calm, measured presence on the board through thick and thin. To say that John has positively influenced not only our Board of Education, but our Safety and Security Committee, and all that went with that, is an absolute understatement. I don't think that, perhaps many of you realize, and if you don't, John is not only a trained SRO, but John trains SROs. He has spoken on his professional expertise throughout the state, and he served as an invaluable resource at a critical time in Montpel's, you know, history. When we created the Safety and Security Committee, it was shortly after that tragic day in Sandy Hook. And John led the way, providing insightful recommendations. And I, I, just, you know, just wonderful, wonderful things that he's been able to bring to the board for us. John was always an advocate for the children and to have a police officer in the school, and to have an SRO in the school. It took a while for John to bring us around to that belief. At first, we, we didn't really want to hear it.
It was nuts.
Yep, we did not want to hear it. But his slow presentation, encouragement, and then, of course, his leadership on the Safety and Security Committee ultimately brought us around, made us realize the positive influence that an SRO would have in our schools. And it's, it's just that kind of leadership, John's leadership, that slow and steady progression of things that just make him, make him, and hopefully, maybe one day, again, just a very, very valuable board member. And just personally, John, I'm really gonna miss you, and if I keep talking, I'll probably choke up. But I, it's been an honor to serve with you.
Thank you, Karen, I really appreciate it.
You're just a man of integrity, and just understood what it meant to be a board member, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. You're here.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes. First thing I want to do, John, is thank your family for sharing you with us for close to 10 years. I know, love, you probably haven't seen a lot of what we do here, but if you had, you'd know what a valued member John was with this board. He was always thoughtful, insightful, analytical. He brought his experience as a, as a police officer to us, and as Karen said, brought us around in things I'm gonna do with the security, safety. He was a great chairman of the Policy Committee. And above all, one thing everyone knew about John was he was always in this for the right reasons. Never had a personal gain in mind, it was never political, anything like that. It was just simply doing what we do best, which is just simply for the children of this district. And John was the exemplification of that. John, it's been a long 10 years. I've enjoyed working with you so much. You're consummate professional, and your presence and your contribution will be greatly missed. And I wish you all the best, Godspeed in life, I'm sure we'll pass her across many times again. Thank you for your service to us.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. I would like to also mention that John was a pleasure to work with. I know that we had a lot of fun at times going over to Educational Services Commission. John donated a lot of his time, and I think seeing his work from up here for 10 years, I guess he was in what, second or third grade?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Somewhere around there, when he got on the board. And I think that John had one thing in mind, besides everything that Karen and Mike said about him, he was always here for the children. And he had no aspirations for anything other than serving the Board of Education, being an advocate for the children, which is why we're all here. And for that, I thank you, John. I wish you the best. You still owe me a breakfast, so I will wait for that call. But John, on behalf of not just the board, but I think all of the citizens of Montpel, we owe you a thanks, and we owe you a lot for your dedication, and we wish you the best.
Thank you.
And you're excellent. Thank you. Okay, we have.
If I may, real quick?
No, you're off the board.
Just to all of you, the past nine and a half years have been great. I mean, you're all a great bunch of people. It was a blessing to work with all of you. You know, at times, I know I can be a little gruff, rough around the edges, which you all know. I just want to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to work with you guys. I also want to thank my family.
Why don't you introduce your family?
I will. For those of you that don't know, this is my wife, Anna.
Hi.
My son, Luke, and my daughter, Juliana. So, you know, we, I remember when John Allen was here, and when he left, and he said that one of the major things, and it's one of the things that I learned from him, one of the major things that he felt going off is that he missed a lot of stuff with his kids. I was very fortunate in the fact that I was able to create whatever schedules I had to create, so I didn't have to miss that time. And I learned a lot from him with that aspect. Karen was one of the first people that talked to me about being on the board. I mean, Charlie, you've been there for me since day one, same as you, Mike. And, you know, the rest of you guys, as you all came on, I mean, we all built a good relationship. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, there's a lot, I've dealt with a lot of boards around the state, just because of my profession, there's a lot of dysfunctional boards out there, there really is. And the fact of the matter is, is that the entire time that I was on this board, this was a pleasure by every stretch of the imagination, because everybody got along, everybody had the right mindset going in, and nobody looked for anything extra beyond to look out the benefit of the kids in the district. So with that being. So with that being said, I'd like to thank all of you guys for allowing me to be a part of this, and who knows, maybe in the future, I'll throw my hat back in the ring.
Great, great, thank you, John.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Turning back to the agenda.
Dr. Rod.
Huh?
Dr. Rod, on that resolution.
No, we don't, then you can't leave. Let's vote on K-11.
Dr. Cordelino?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Daughtry?
Yes.
Dr. Mudrak?
Yes.
Mr. Morella?
Yes.
Mr. Raffort?
Yes.
Mr. Zuckerman?
Yes.
And Ms., I'm sorry. Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
With regret, yes. Right, would you have that? I think John speaks for everybody with that, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and one last thing, congratulations, Christine, and good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. Section Q, getting back to the agenda, old business? General board comment and new business? Public participation, anybody would like to say anything? What, Scott? Stand up, Scott.
Two things, thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of myself personally, and the entire 550-member MTEA, we would also like to thank Mr. Morella for his years of service. We would also like to thank everybody in the room and their families for another great calendar year, and wish you all a very happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. We look forward to seeing you in 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Well, before we adjourn, I would like to also wish everyone happy holidays to you and your families. I guess we will not be seeing any of you in a formal environment until next year, on January 7th. We'll now entertain a motion for adjournment, please. So moved. Second. All in favor? Opposed? Good. Thank you very much, and we will see all of you on the 7th. Would you like to thank Mr. Eddle? Thank you.